Our Father in Heaven, we are indeed grateful for the opportunity that we have. I ask Thy Spirit and Thy blessings to be upon our city council and city staff as they are planning things for our city that they will do so with the interest of the citizens. Bless the citizens, it all will be safe and well.
Thank you. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There are not.
Okay. If not, I'll call up, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
We have a motion by Eric, a second by Lynn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item number five, we're gonna have Bill Exeter from the Developmental Center come and talk to us about an exciting expansion that's taking place on the north side. Did you by any chance bring any slides?
I did.
Okay, great. The little button on the end, there you go.
It's a pleasure to be here, I appreciate the opportunity, I met with Mayor Daniels.
Bill, why don't you relocate that mic so that it's over in front of you?
Like that, you can hear me better?
More comfortable, there you go.
I'm just having a loud voice and not...
Well, it's getting recorded.
I understand. I met with Mayor Daniels last week and asked him to come and give a short presentation about the expansion of the Developmental Center's north forty acres. And talk a little bit specifically about the Murdoch connector, which is part of that expansion. We're just waiting for the slide. There we go. So, this right here is the portion of the developmental land that's, the master plan that's been created by the board is cited for development. That also includes this portion right here of Harvey Boulevard. We've, the master plan was approved about a year ago, year and a half ago, and then it's been through the legislature for some approvals. And they've approved to start developing this portion up here, which I think the next slide will show, if you could hit that for me. Oh, next one, let's keep going through, fine, sorry. You might go backwards once or twice. This area right here, the red is marked retail, the blue commercial, although some of this up in the northwest corner or northeast corner may also be commercial. But this is the first portion that's been approved, this is about eight acres. And then this road, diagonal road here, is the first road that's gonna go in. And then we will start after that with the connector down here from Harvey Boulevard. And there's a next, why don't we look at the next slide, 'cause I'm sure that's the part that everybody's most interested in. This portion here was approved, this plan was submitted by the Utah County Commissioners. And first the board was kind of vehemently against the idea of having this road go through and split the Developmental Center property for obvious reasons, concern, safety for the individuals that live there, and trying to keep them safe and away from traffic. But having this road going through, it seemed to make sense to add that right there at Harvey Boulevard and connect it all the way through. I think that's ninety-fourth or ninety-six hundred south in American Fork, or Highland, I'm sorry. And so, this plan was approved by the board, and this road will go in after the diagonal road is completed, or at least partially completed. And then this Murdoch connector with Harvey Boulevard will go in, giving an east-west access which everyone in the area would like to have.
So this is the high school up here?
That is correct, that's Lone Peak High School.
This is the golf course here.
It's the golf course, this is Cedar Hills Drive. So there'll actually be two thoroughfares. The idea of the road, first and foremost, is to drive traffic up to the commercial and retail developmental area, or developed area of this property. And then to create also congestion, or ease congestion right here at the high school twice a day. So I understand from Mayor Thompson, that's quite a problem getting in and out of the high school. This road will alleviate some of that congestion, and also give a second corridor, east and west, from Cedar Hills Drive and then Harvey Boulevard across. That's basically the most important part that I want to share. If there's some specific questions, I'll do my best to answer those for you. We just wanted to inform you, first of all, that we've been approved to develop that portion of the property. RFPs for the development is, are going out this week. And so we expect to have a decision made on developer probably in the next ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days. And then from there, we'll continue to move forward to process the development of that portion of the property right up here. And then, there's one more slide. Now, let's go, let's go forward one more, see if it's on there, if I added it. Okay, let's, can we go backwards? Right there. This is a second, oh, what about, yeah, this portion right here is also part of the latter part of the first phase. And this is single-family housing that will go in here. And then commercial, some more commercial, and then multifamily housing along the road. And then this portion back here will be single-family dwellings as well.
So this, this road here is significant because it becomes one of the only roads we have in Pleasant Grove that goes from Canyon Road clear out to, how far out is it?
I understand that'll take traffic all the way out to Lehigh. With that, or, do you have any questions for me?
Bill, I was wondering if you could go over sort of the experience you've had with the public in county planning commission meetings, has this been well received?
Well, I can honestly tell you, I don't know a lot of how it's gone with the planning commission. I've been on the board for the last four years, and I know it's been kind of a heated, at times, discussion with regards to the connector. For obvious reasons, at the Developmental Center, our first priority is the, the health, welfare, and safety of the individuals. And we have felt that putting a road or cutting a road through there somehow might put them at risk. And so we were kind of really pushing back against that. But as was pointed out to us on multiple occasions, that this road right here, since it's part of the master plan anyway, that we might as well just connect it with Harvey Boulevard and send it all the way through. And in December, the governing board approved that, that last plan that I showed you with the roundabout. And that's, it's now part of the master plan, been approved, and will be going forward. Timeframe, I don't have as to when it will be completed, but I, I would estimate sometime in the next two years.
We appreciate the willingness to come and outreach and talk to our council. The other, just a point of curiosity for me is, do you know what the population is of the Developmental Center now, and what it's projected to be when this build-out's done?
I believe it's about, I wanna say two-hundred. Forgive me if I don't have an exact number, I've only been on the job for about three and a half weeks. So I'm still learning some of the ins and outs, but it's around two-hundred individuals that are residing at the Developmental Center right now. And that's part of the, leaving this portion down here is for expansion of the Developmental Center in the future. Which, I'm of the opinion, and maybe I shouldn't be speaking for myself, but that will be a needed addition going forward.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Is there, did, was there a, thank you for coming, by the way. I've always wondered if this was going to happen, because I knew that there had been talk about it, especially at the golf course. But is this the, is that diagonal road, can I just have a close-up of? Is, was there a slide that was a close-up to where that is going to deposit in American Fork?
Uh, the, the, I think it's, next one, back, or go forward, I'm sorry. One thing, it's the fourth slide, that one?
Yes, thank you, that's exactly what I was looking for. So that is the, the north side of the golf course, where those two houses have been bought.
Right, that is correct.
So that is my question, has all the property been, been purchased for the road to go, to connect?
It's my understanding from Mayor Thompson that they have, they have two houses right in this area that they purchased.
Right.
As soon as, you know, this is completed, they do have, they're ready to move forward.
Okay.
With expanding that and building the road.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate you taking the time.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we have Corman King from our Historic Preservation Commission, and we're going to talk about the CCC buildings.
I have some slides there that pull up. Thank you for letting us show you this, just quick update from our commission. That's, we, we met back in February, and the idea was we would've been done with this a lot sooner, but things get in the way. So, what we've got to report to you now are some costs that we've worked up with the help of Dionne. And then just to put forward the options that are available to us. All right, I don't know if, did you get the?
Did it turn off? Is that why it's blinking?
Maybe while we're, while we're working on that, we could go ahead and discuss maybe the options. We'll look at the numbers in a minute, but the options that are ahead of us are, one, we let the Bureau of Reclamation demolish the buildings. They're, we don't have any worry, they're gone, and that's not our problem. If we as a city want to preserve a piece of that property, of, of those buildings, as a memorial to a big part of our city's history, the civilian conservation corps, then it's gonna come at a cost to relocate, well, to disassemble, store, and then later, probably next year sometime, relocate it to be a Boy Scouts of America craft slash storage slash utilization building. That about sum it up there on what we would be using it for, something like that, yeah. So, that's what we're looking at, the, the, our commission isn't really pushing, one way or the other. We're presenting you guys with the, the information, so that as a city, we can make the decision whether it's something we would like to pursue, it's worth it. What we'll get out of it is, is a shed, and I don't, maybe, shed's not the right word, a craft building or something. Or it's something that the scouts could come in and store things, and come in and set tables up and do crafts, et cetera, that kind of thing. But it would come at a cost of, I'll show you the numbers here, yeah, there we go. So I just run that, and I just hijacked the one we did in February and threw a few slides at the front of it. So, if we do have any questions, I want to review some of the information we presented last time we can, but... So, just the title, the, the building was, go to the next slide if you will. So, you can see there, we have, the building, the photo to the far left is the new, this modern, that's what it looks like today. The other two slides are just some representative slides of what the camp looked like. And there's more further down, if we wanted to look at them, we can. But that's, the camp was, was a big area in Pleasant Grove along eleven-hundred north, where the, where the Water Association is and the Bureau of Reclamation are now. There were a lot of buildings, we have two of them left. One is a mess hall, which is the one we're interested in, and another one, which I might, what, very well, I don't know, does this help point, or, anyway?
Yes.
Does it? Great. Point there, wow, that one right there, I believe that's, that may very well be the doctor's office, it's about that same size. But we're not, we're not interested in that, because to move it, to disassemble it, is going to be a lot, there's more, it's more intricate. And to, to disassemble this, I don't know if you can kind of see these, these uprights going along there? Those are eight-foot sections, these buildings were built in, in Oregon. Then they were shipped, and the local folks would build them, plumb them, and put electricity into them. And they were totally modular, you could take them down, move them, put them back up. Which makes it nice that this building here, we could take how many ever sections of this we wanted, we've talked about maybe forty feet of it, of, I believe this is an eighty-foot building. It's about twenty feet wide, about eighty foot long. And we would disassemble the pieces, store them for, you know, until it was quote-unquote convenient next year, and, and then, and then put them up on, at Anderson Park. Dionne, did you have any further information on the, the contract with the park, and whether we can in fact do that? We talked about, you were gonna look into that?
Yeah, we looked into it, there was nothing in the sale agreements.
Nothing to prohibit it? So then we would probably move forward with moving it. We went and, Dionne, I, someone from the State Historical Preservation Organization, and a, a state architect, we walked around Anderson Park and, and found a couple of different possible sites where it would be great to put this building up, and it wouldn't be too much of a, of a, of trouble. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please? Thank you. These are the numbers we've come up with. As you can see, our total is right around, you know, fifteen thousand dollars. However, we've already arranged for this, this will be donated. We, we have a feeling that we could probably get almost fifty percent of that donated, we're not sure on that. But the, the person that, that's donating this felt like they could get a good donation for the concrete and the excellent insulation of the concrete. I'm thinking hardware, you know, lumber paint supplies, you know, perhaps, and as I, as I mentioned here, perhaps like Ace or somebody, or somebody could help donate some of that. So, we could be substantially less than fifteen thousand dollars to have, one, a shed or a building for the scouts to use, and two, in so doing, preserve a piece of our, of our history of Pleasant Grove City and of the nation. Actually, go to the next slide, this is the last slide I have for, for this update. Can we go to the next slide? This is from a guy named Roger Roper, he's with the State Historical Preservation Organization. And he, he points out that, there, there was a question we had about funding from the, the state, and it won't be any because we're moving it. The CLG funds, which is what's available through the State Historical Preservation Group, is only for, like, like it says here, putting something on the National Register. This is what I wanted to point out, that, that these buildings are very rare. There's very few of them left anywhere in the nation, especially here in Utah, there's very few left. The Pleasant, Pleasant Grove building would be, would be a great thing for us to be able to, at least part of it, you know, partially, partially restore, or we don't have to really restore it, but preserve, I guess, from, from the move. And, and then as he points out here, the building, given a new use, it won't just be a deteriorating artifact. It'll be something that gets used, and it's more than just a, an old building that's sitting there, it's something that can hopefully be used. That's the plan, that's the idea we have. We can go back up one, if we have any questions about the costs, back up one slide, but that's pretty much the presentation. Are there any questions?
Have we approached the BSA at all for any donations?
We have not. We are planning to use their labor volunteer Eagle project on a lot of the labor. But we have not looked for any kind of donation from them.
And I'm wondering if this is phased out, if there's a removal cost and then a install cost?
Dionne?
If I can just speak to that. Looking at the facility, we would definitely need some heavy iron, so Public Works would need to help us a little bit. Kind of briefly mentioned this to Marty. I'm thinking probably two days to remove what we would need to remove in this door. That would be pretty much the cost for removal, would be our equipment and labor. And then as, as we got into finding location, all that kind of stuff, we could definitely need to help move the material to Anderson Park. And once it was constructed, then we could have the scouts help on painting and those types. Do they have an updated timeframe on when they need it out?
So the last update was like a month ago, they wanted it out of there. I think, just like us, I think they've got plenty on their plate, and they haven't been hammered at my, at our door. So, they wanted it yesterday, out of there, so have not...
The buildings that, that we're looking at, are they actually the original?
Yes.
And they've been preserved, like up-kept, or just they survived like that?
No, they've, they've been painted on the outside, the, the roof, we've, I think there's new felt put on the roof at some point. They've been kept up by the Bureau of Reclamation, if I'm not mistaken.
It's been, I would say, when they relocated them, when they redid Pearl River Water Office Complex, they moved them at that point. And I don't think they've done anything with them, I mean, as far as the paint, it's chipping, falling off, that type of thing. The roof is a corrugated metal, so possibly it could be reused.
That's a World War II type roof?
Yeah, in fact, is the bottom picture there shows, after the, after the civilian conservation corps ended, and when World War II got rolling, it became an Air Force training camp, that's, those are Air Force airmen.
Mr. Corman, what would happen with the other buildings that, if, that we don't pick up?
The, the Bureau of Reclamation has a plan to put out an advertisement in the local newspapers for any civilians, you know, any citizens, I guess, that want to come and, and snag them. If, if they want to pay for the removal, they can do that, and do with what they want, other than that, it will be demolished.
And you said they're in pieces right now, or where are they at right now?
They're, they're, just like that, that picture, that top left, that's, that's exactly what it looks like. They're, they're behind the, they're, so I want to say behind, they're, they're west, west of the Water Association. So you come into the Water Association, there's a big gate, and there's two buildings right there.
And it's that one, and then that other one that you said that used to be a doctor's office?
It's similar to that. If it's not that one, it's, it's a, it's more of a square house, it might be as big as this square right here.
Uh-huh. And those are the two that are down there right now?
Those are the two that are...
Okay.
The, the mess house is being, the mess hall is being used as a, a big storage area right now by, I'm not sure, the Bureau, or who?
We don't, if we decide to not take them, then that adds a paper, and anyone can come and take them.
So, do, does the Parks Department feel like that'd be a good?
I, I'm sixes either way. I, I kind of have, with our vandalism in Anderson Park, I kind of have a little bit of hesitation. But I'm preserving the history, I think it would be a good idea.
From the preservation standpoint?
Is there any grants available besides what Diana suggested in moving or relocating buildings like this?
We haven't looked into it.
Not from the state, as far as the historical commission goes.
Oh, oh, from the state?
Just anywhere, I mean, if there's federal or state grant?
In fact, this, I, I can comment on that. The, Zach Nelson, the state archaeologist that's involved with this project, they originally tried to get them for a CCC museum, which I believe is in Price. So they wanted to move them down there, there's another CCC museum kind of thing near Eureka and that area, part of that historical district there. So there, there were some available, that was their original hope, when they moved them and preserved them the first time. That fell through, and now it's, we want them gone. Pleasant Grove City has first dibs. If Pleasant Grove City doesn't take them, then we'll put it up for, in an ad, and then if nobody takes them, we'll demolish them.
Okay.
And as far as, as, as to kind of echo what, what Dionne just said, our, our commission is more or less sixes on it. We're, we would love to see it preserved, if it can fit another use, such as the scout shed building, and, and work as that, then great. We, we think this would be an awesome thing to move forward on. However, if the city doesn't feel that, hey, you know, we can build another shed, and we're not that worried about this part of our history, the, the commission is, we're not really strongly for or against, I guess.
Counsel, what are your thoughts?
Where would we take the money from?
Well, your cost would be like in kind hours, right, labor? Per se.
So what's the total cost to the city?
Cost?
Can we back up to the cost, or actually forward?
I mean, looking at that, if we can get some of the big things, the concrete, and if we can get half of that done, and the pump trucks taken care of, I mean, the cash out of pockets down to five thousand dollars or something like that.
Would this come from, is it eligible to come from Parks and Rec fees?
No.
What do you call it?
Impact fees?
No.
So it's an existing building?
It'd be a general fund, capital, well, capital fund. Which, I think if we needed to come up with five or six thousand dollars, that, that should be doable. It would take a budget amendment, we'd have to run through that process.
And even the lumber paint supplies, I mean, is that any, can that be an Eagle project?
Generally, the scouts don't like to, fundraising portion of things. Possibility, I, I could be one of the scouts' projects to try to go out and get some of the materials donated. I think it's something we'd, we would be looking at, trucking this year.
Where could we store it in the meantime, down at the pipe plant, one of the buildings?
That was the thought.
It's like worst-case scenarios, we take it down, put it down in the building at the pipe plant, and then in the next six to eight months, try to come up with a way to build at Anderson Park, and if not, then we put it up for bid?
If it's, if we can get it down, and then we can store it.
Mm-hmm. We do that, and see what grants BSA, local businesses could donate?
Maybe even two or three years.
I love the idea of Anderson Park. I, I think that's a great location for it.
It's, it's a good location, I don't, the neutral nature of both our historical commission and Parks is kind of unusual.
Don't get me wrong, I mean, obviously, we're making this presentation because we feel it's worth it.
Right.
We, you know, we, we don't want to make it sound like we've got to do this, 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 you know, if this doesn't get preserved, we're in trouble. It's, it's part of the history of our city. So, how, how much do we want to save it? That's what we're deciding right now. And I think the idea of, of at least dismantling it, like we've talked about, the, the cost of dismantling it is, is a few days of, of equipment and labor, work. We get it over, we get it stored, and then we have some time to, to decide, maybe get some fundraising done.
That's probably the right thing to do, is just, is take care of the, the storage, dismantling and storage.
Okay.
And then decide, make sure that we know that it's Anderson and where. And perhaps by then, there could be some projects involving citizens and Eagle Scouts that could help.
It'll take us a little while to get some drawings done up and build and permit those types of things.
You guys all right with that?
Yeah, that's great.
I like that idea.
Great suggestion.
Okay. All right, well, let's, let's go in that direction then, Dionne?
Okay. So, can I report then to the Bureau, to Zach, the, the, the person I've been working with, that we are going to take down the section of it we are interested in, at least?
Forty feet.
Okay, and we will take that and store that, and then after that, we're done with it.
Right, and then we need a date, right? A deadline?
Right.
Um...
Can I, just one, one point? If speed is of the essence, I think our guys are really busy right now.
I'm fine doing it if we really feel like it.
So are you sixes on this too?
Well, he doesn't live here, so he doesn't care about the historical.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what it is?
I am interested, I'm always concerned about, you know, okay, you gotta have this out here next week, you know?
I think that's the question, Marty.
It doesn't sound like they're in a huge rush.
If, if we make the commitment, and they give us a date, and the date's reasonable, then we can fit it into the schedule, if it's...
In order for both of these projects to happen, there is a potential, we know one for sure, where there is going to be an ask of tax incentive. And there's a second project where I think there's a high likelihood that we'll be asked for a tax incentive. In order for us to do either one of these incentives, we would need to create a community development area, or what we call a CDA. That is the mechanism that we use. We use that with DoTERRA when we recruited them to Pleasant Grove. And we would use the same mechanism for these two potential projects. One of the projects is just off of I-15. The other project would be more in the neighborhood of State Street and North County Boulevard. I believe the council mayor or aware of what both these projects are. I can't disclose names or anything like that, because we are still in early process of working through these things. But in order for me as the city administrator to start getting this project, or these project areas created, I just need approval from the city council to proceed.
Okay, questions for Scott?
All right, turn me loose.
I got one quick one. At, at what point do we anticipate we would make the decision whether to apply the CDA? It sounds like tonight, we just want to talk about the CDA creation and not necessarily apply it, because we could apply it to one or other, or both?
Yep. That's a good question. The creation takes probably a couple months, and there's a process of agreements, well, not necessarily agreements, to set the project area up. It's just action that the city counts, not even really the city council, it's our redevelopment agency, which is you guys in a different setting. But you are the ones that have to say, okay, this is going to be our project area. Now, what we have to work on as staff is to define the boundaries of the area, and so that's really our next step. We define what the boundaries are, come back and say, it's so many acres here, so many acres here, you approve the area. But that does not mean anything until we actually enter into an inter-local agreement between us... between us and the CDA, us, or the school district and the CDA, the county and the CDA, when it comes time to how much tax increment's going to be generated, and how much the city is willing to rebate back to the potential developer.
So there's a time element to, a timeliness element to one of the projects, that if we don't get started on it, then we really, we really just should step out of the way as far as going after bringing this company into the area.
Yeah.
The other one is more, you're aware of, you know, the company that's involved and the type of development. And there's going to be some discussions coming up here that we would need to be able to demonstrate that we're headed in that direction.
That's exactly right. And so what you're giving me authority to do is create the area. It does not commit the city council to anything at this point, as far as actual tax increment deals.
You're okay with that? Anyone else?
Cost, Scott, with Randy Sands' time or other details of this?
There is a cost to set up the areas, and we have money in our RDA account. When we do an RDA, we get a 5% of the increment generated is given back to the RDA as administrative fee, or administrative costs. And so we have money that's already generated in there that we can use to create the project area. It, when we collect money in our RDA, CDA accounts, they have specific uses, they're earmarked money, they can't be used for general fund costs. But because of that, we will not need general fund money in order to create the CDA. Another good question, I was going to address that, forgot, but thank you.
Anyone else?
So you stand for commercial or community?
Community development area. RDA is redevelopment, or...
There aren't any more RDAs, it's an EDA or a CDA, right?
Well, the RDA, they still call the large picture, but the actual mechanisms for the increment are now CDAs and EDAs.
Okay, so are we okay giving staff direction to move forward in the creation of this CDA?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, definitely. Okay. Scott, let's proceed forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, and the next item is eight, number eight. And this is to consider for adoption ordinance 2016-20, amending Title II, Chapter I, permanent administrative councils, boards, commissions, and districts of the Pleasant Grove Municipal Code, removing the Strawberry Days Committee as one of the permanent committees, and providing for an effective date.
So mayor and council, these next two items have been placed on the agenda at the request of the mayor. As you're aware, we have had discussions regarding the status of the relationship between the Strawberry Days Association and the city. In 2013, we added the Strawberry Days Committee as one of our permanent boards and commissions. The first ordinance that you're considering just removes that Strawberry Days Committee from the list. The second ordinance had established some parameters for that committee. Those parameters were actually never accomplished fully. Bylaws were never adopted. It was anticipated that some discussions would happen between the Strawberry Days Association and the city in terms of reorganizing how the celebration was going to be planned and coordinated and operated. Those discussions were never finalized. We're still in the midst of those discussions, and it will probably end up looking something different than what we had originally anticipated. So we're just going to repeal that ordinance that established that committee. Any questions?
Okay, so are we dealing with item nine as well?
Yeah, just, they're pretty much the same.
Okay, so the consider for adoption ordinance 2016-21, repealing and rescinding ordinance 2013-30, Strawberry Days Committee, and providing for an effective date. So we're considering both of these. Let's go ahead and have discussions. Any questions for Tina?
I've got a few. The first question that comes to mind, we have a standard practice in our council meetings of not taking action in work sessions. We typically don't pass ordinances unless we're in a council meeting. I've had a number of members of the public tell me that they wanted to comment on this particular item. Is there a reason why we're doing it tonight in a work session?
It wouldn't have been a public, it wouldn't have been a public hearing anyway.
Right, but they could have at least spoken in an open session that we don't normally have in a work session.
It's on the work session agenda at the request of the mayor, and there's nothing prohibiting us from taking action in a work session. We've simply chosen to do that as a policy. As long as we notify that action will be taken on items in a work session, it's perfectly legal to do so.
It would be my preference to continue this item, both of these items, and allow the public to comment on them, given the number of residents that have expressed interest to me. Second question I have, Tina...
Want to make a motion to that effect?
I'd like to get a couple more questions answered if I could, and then I might make that very motion. Thanks, Mayor. The second question I had was, and I'm looking at the September 17th of 2013 minutes, where Mayor Call said that there were reasons to make this permanent committee, and to bring Strawberry Days under the authority of the city. He talked about the growth of the city and the complex nature of the celebration, and said it was time to make it part of the city's celebration. And I haven't heard arguments yet, or rationale, for why we would undo that or repeal something that was unanimously decided not that very long ago. Is there a reason why we don't want this as a permanent committee of the city?
I believe the answer is, is that we have decided to move in a different direction. My understanding is that we intend to make it more of a contractual relationship with the Strawberry Days Association, instead of absorbing the Strawberry Days Association.
Some of the fears that I have, and this is just part of the discussion, not really a question, but some of the concerns I have are, if we've, you know, if we've been many years trying to get bylaws passed and haven't yet, we might be exposing the city to greater liability, putting at risk the city's own tax-exempt status if the Strawberry Days Association is more than a decade out of compliance with its entity status and doesn't have a nonprofit status of its own yet. It might make more sense to do some of the foundational work before we make this change, so that we still have the protection and the umbrella of the city over this organization before we make a change. So I will formally move, Mayor and Council, that we continue items eight and nine to a date uncertain. If there's an interest in...
Tina, can you address the issue that Councilor Stanley's bringing up as far as tax exempt, or Denise, can you?
Well, I believe it was presented in the last meeting from Jason Hunter, who was their financial accountant, that they have, they don't use our tax ID number. And so I don't see how that's relevant. They have used our tax-exempt number on occasions to buy supplies, was my understanding. I don't have any direct knowledge of either one of those, but he did make the statement, and so I'm not sure how, given the fact that he said we don't use, they don't use our number, I don't see how that's relevant to worrying about whether it's going to jeopardize our tax-exempt status.
My thought is primarily that it would be of value to make sure that all the ducks are in a row, that things are lined up, that the foundational work is complete, before we make some kind of a significant change to policy that's been on our books for three years, that was unanimously decided three years ago, was the right direction to go with supporting arguments.
That was then, this is now.
Those are actual...
So we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. All right, continue. Who is next?
Mayor?
Yes.
I make, unless there's further discussion.
I do have a couple of other questions.
Please.
So...
You just need the headset.
Yeah.
We need headsets, because I'm like moving. So I do have, I, there are questions about how contractually our relationship will be with the association. So by doing this, does that then open the door so that we can have more conversations? Or do...
This just puts it back to square, this just puts it back to status quo before 2013. And, and yes, it does allow for the continued discussions of how are we going to organize this moving forward?
Okay.
The intent, my intent in bringing this forward is to cause a discussion amongst the council. I wanted the council, in light of the different questions that have been asked about Strawberry Days outside of council meeting, in the public eye, in social media, phone calls, et cetera, I wanted the council to have an opportunity to discuss what is in the best interest of the city and the citizens of Pleasant Grove, where you have thousands of residents from the area donating their time, their money, their resources, to a celebration of the, of this magnitude? And is it really in our best interest to, to continue to put the committee under such scrutiny when they seem to be functioning and have functioned for decades without, without the type of oversight that was contemplated in 13? And since the goals and objectives that were stated in 13 were not completed, it seems like we need to reset ourselves back to where we started this, and work on the discussion, and work on the relationship, and come up with what are the interface points? And once we have defined those things, then if it makes sense that we look at bringing the organization under the umbrella of the city, perhaps that's the time to consider it. Otherwise, I think maybe the actions back in 13 were to address an issue. The issue has passed from then, and we have a different situation today. So that's what I'd like to hear from the council.
Let me speak to that, if I may, Mayor. I think that's, I agree with 90% of what was just said, I think that's very insightful. My point, broadly speaking, is that until we've had that discussion, it may be best not to take action, that we might reverse yet again. If we're, if we haven't explored the costs, it may cost significantly more to operate as a separate entity. There may be renewal fees, or costs, or compliance requirements to get a nonprofit status and tax-exempt status that's separate from the city's tax-exempt status, that may be a burden. We haven't explored the bylaw issues, the contractual relationship, the liability issues. In my view, there's a lot of questions that haven't been addressed yet. And so from my perspective, this is premature, without sound arguments to support it. We shouldn't disturb the status quo that is the standing law in our state until we've figured out what we want the relationship to be. Will we, will we allow Strawberry Days to move in a direction where it does have paid employees, a director, a different organizational structure entirely? Is that what's in the best interest of our citizens? And what are the cost implications of operating as a truly separate entity?
Right. And you raised some valid questions. Those questions could be answered now, the way it is. Or they could be answered and worked on and negotiated the way it was, which is what this is proposing, until they're resolved. And then when the city, if the city were to bring the organization under it, it would be ready. The city would be prepared for taking on liability or additional responsibility. The city would be organized in such a way with a department and people to staff it and properly assist with it. So that's why I brought it up. I mean, without bringing it up, there's no opportunity for a structured discussion. And I think this gets to the heart of the matter. This brings it, this brings the issue forward, and this gives the council an opportunity to say, yes, we want to do that now, or no, we want to back up, and then we want to handle this differently. So your points are well taken.
As are yours. And to that point, my position is that it would be to our advantage not to cut an umbilical cord before we have figured out what the nursery looks like.
Understood, yeah. So now, so the objective here is to find out how does the rest of the council feel about that particular idea, and what do they want to do about it?
Sure.
Well, I love the idea of having the association decide what they look best. What does that, what does their best look like? And then presenting that to us. You know, maybe they want to be part of us, maybe they don't. But I love separating us so that they can determine what is the best way for them to function. And so I like removing the scrutiny. I love removing them from the scrutiny while they have their discussions. And I want to, I'm feeling very much like this is the same exact conversation we just had with the, about the chamber. What, you know, this is part of our city, these are members of our city, and I, I love what we just did with the chamber. So I'm feeling very much like this is a very good step so that they can define who they are and who they want us to be with them. Anyway.
Is this state law, Tina?
What do you mean, state law?
Ben just referred to this as being state law. Is there state law?
Don't know what the reference was.
Don't recall saying that.
Yeah, you just said state law, so I'm not sure what you're referring to. I'm fine with keeping it as the mayor suggested, letting them be their own separate entity. For right now, if we want to come back together down the road, we have that option. So I'm fine with, this is proposed on the agenda tonight.
So just to be clear on the record, while we're doing is removing the Strawberry Days Committee, the Strawberry Days Association has always been, and is still their own separate entity.
Okay. So it's almost titles that were...
Right, it's a question of semantics, right? We tried to organize a committee. The committee was semi-organized, but the remainder of what was planned never happened. So the association and their responsibilities for the celebration have always been the same as they were before this happened.
No one's moving to being paid positions, we're not hiring an executive director, we're not moving towards any of that. We're basically just changing titles of organizations.
Well, we're just removing the committee.
And going to the association.
Okay.
We're removing a committee, which I, correct me on this one.
Wasn't approved to be...
I think that the city council, or the city, was going to be responsible for appointing the chairs and directing some of this effort, when that's really just the beginning of something much broader.
Correct.
And we're not doing that.
Correct. This was, enacting the ordinance in the beginning was step one of a multi-step process. We never completed the multi-steps. And so we're just, in my opinion, we're just making it clear that we never completed that, and we're back at the table negotiating how that's going to look moving forward.
Other discussion?
I, similar discussion, again, like Diana said, to the chamber. You know, three years ago, like Tina said, it was never carried out, and who knows? And I, I hope we can have some great discussions and get some things done. And who knows, five years from now, we may, the future council may have a different insight.
Or two years from now, or next year.
So it is what it is, and so I...
But I'm done.
I favor what you've said, and appreciate it, and so if there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
Lynn, did you have... Okay.
Let me state...
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mayor, thank you. Broadly speaking, my biggest concern is that there has been no effort to quantify the financial risk to the city and to the citizens. What I'm looking to is the person for 38,000 people who will, you know, wield this sword of justice and defense of truth and virtue, I feel like I have a fiduciary obligation to make sure that we are thinking about the financial implications and the risks to the citizens of Pleasant Grove. I think that we have not done that, and we are making a mistake to unwind an ordinance from three years ago without having bylaws in place, without having calculated costs, without having gotten a separate entity's status actually in compliance with the state and things like that. So...
Tina, on the ordinance, can you address the ordinance, sorry, Mayor?
What, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
He addresses it an ordinance that was taken place three years ago.
The 2013-30 ordinance that we're discussing, repealing and rescinding.
Well, was it put into place?
The ordinance establishing the committee was adopted.
Anonymously.
The provisions of the ordinance... The provisions of the ordinance were never completed.
That's what I mean.
There was, there was two main things. I mean, one was creating the committee and putting it under the umbrella of the city. And the second was giving the city council, the mayor, the ability to appoint the chair and vice chair with the vice and consider of the council. Those are the two things that this did. Now, there was, like Tina said, a myriad of other issues that needed to be resolved just besides those two. That was kind of the kickoff point. Once we got those two things going, and the committee got up and running, they were able to do and take care of certain things that we thought we, we as a city eventually we'd have to go in and take care of. And it got to a point where we feel pretty good about where they're at today, Strawberry Days Association and the Rodeo Association. I mean, the Rodeo Association's always been separate anyway, to where I think all we're doing today is saying we're no longer going to appoint the chair and vice chair, and there's not going to be a committee that's under the city umbrella. I don't think it does anything else other than that. I don't know if there's really financial considerations or complications because of that, because.
So Tina, are we putting ourselves in financial jeopardy by approving this motion tonight? I'm sorry, I'm asking Tina, not you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I've got people speaking behind me.
That's true.
That are commenting and answering the question.
Okay. Can we ask you to please let her speak without making comments? Thank you.
Okay. So in my opinion, I don't, I don't see any financial risk in, in adopting these ordinances tonight. The Strawberry Days Association has its own financial obligations. They've got their own accounts, their own checkbook. We have certain things that we've shown over the last three years that we've traditionally been responsible for. We have those accounted for. I'm not sure where the financial risk would come.
Let me ask a hypothetical. Do we serve as a city as a backstop if there is a, let's say, a suit from the IRS for fourteen years of back taxes from Strawberry Days Association? We don't serve as a backstop in any way as a city?
Not for the association, we don't. The only financial risk that I could see, and we've, and we've maintained it all along, is that the celebration occurs on our property. If there was some sort of a toward action regarding something that happened during the celebration on our property, then that's the only financial obligation that I see, and we have it regardless.
Hopeful.
So, and, so I want to understand, I want to understand, Ben. So what are you, what are you the most afraid of?
I'm the most afraid of putting the city in a weaker bargaining position if we decide that the time comes when this was a mistake to reverse the decision that was unanimously made three years ago, and we're no longer able to have the same kind of negotiating position for the sake of the citizens of Pleasant Grove, to be able to say, you know what, it actually does make sense to have some level of transparency and accountability. If I were to invest in a business as a private person, I would do a certain level of due diligence. We have abdicated that level of financial overview in every regard with respect to Strawberry Days.
So for, for example, so I, I'm seeing this.
Right.
So bring, bring it down. So like, for example?
So for example, Strawberry Days Association becomes a separate entity, decides that it wants a structure that is not as favorable to the citizens, decides that it wants to do a series of events that have a greater financial burden on the public, and they come to the city and we say, well, we don't, we're, we're in a position next year, potentially, where we're about to kick off a celebration. There's a new cost that they tell us is essential, and we no longer have any right to question or overview that, and we can't. We're, we're in a difficult position to say, no, sorry, we're not going to invest in this particular association. I would be okay, actually, if we had a possibility of an open competition for different strawberry associations that might differently want to, you know, bid and offer to run the different celebration events for us. And we could say, this one actually, over here is willing to open their books and be transparent. And this one over here is willing to give fifty thousand dollars back to the city at the end of the celebration. And this one over here is making this offer and that offer, and we can take a, well, that would be a, a win-win. But I anticipate a possibility that we have a single committee still that's now operating completely in the dark. And we are in a weaker bargaining position as a city, if that makes sense.
I'm just going to make.
So, so I, I understand now. It also brings something that we ought to probably talk about, and that would be an event, you know, someone on staff that we're paying. I mean, so if we're going to go down Ben's route, then it would be, we would have someone on staff that was actually overseeing Strawberry Days. Is that what you're thinking?
I think that might be a great solution, yeah. I think, I think making a motion to change this is premature when there are a lot of good options and solutions that might be really what's best for Pleasant Grove.
But I do want to, so the, they have their bylaws. So when you were saying bylaws and all that kind of stuff, they do have their bylaws.
Well, they're the nineteen fifty-seven bylaws.
So.
I mean, that's, those are viable bylaws, but there have been a number of requests over the last five years to, to do more current bylaws. And if they're going to change the bylaws, that's the risk that I'm worried about, is a change to the bylaws that we're not privy to, that is disadvantageous to the residents of Pleasant Grove, that puts us in a time crunch bind with a weaker negotiating position next year.
But what are we, what are we negotiating? It's a celebration. What are we negotiating?
Just remember that these are citizens. So.
Yes.
We're, we're talking about citizens.
On both sides, right. Generous volunteers, for sure. Bargaining what the city's investment will be in this organization.
We already know. So Jason, last week, Jason Hunter the Treasurer showed the financials for Strawberry Days. We know what we contribute as a city. What more are we bargaining?
They may ask for a different amount if there are additional costs.
Yeah, but that's a lot of what ifs. We're trying to solidify these two separate organizations. I mean, we could do what ifs all day long. We'd be here till midnight. So we could do what ifs, but.
We should, we should do the foundational work.
What have you seen in the past in the longest-running continuous celebration? What have you seen in the past that would bring all those concerns up?
What have I seen in the past? I'm not sure I understand the question.
That would merit all these questions that you're asking, that saying that we're heading down a road, a dark road.
Well, I know from my own personal experience that I have received numerous questions from the public that I have referred to city staff and to members of the Strawberry Days Committee and have not had answered to date. So that's a concern in and of itself. The fact that there is currently an inability to get opportunities to review and put eyes on source documents related to Strawberry Days finances is a concern in and of itself.
I think that was answered last week, though, so.
It was not. In fact, I wasn't allowed to ask questions last week, even though the, even though the slide said questions.
Because we're dealing with the now, not the past. We're trying to get this resolved now.
I'm asking about this year's books.
We're not dealing with 2013 anymore, Ben. We're dealing with 2016.
I mentioned in 2016 books.
And I think they answered that for you last week.
And they haven't been shown to me.
And I think they told you why. And I think the mayor explained why too last week.
I think the, the rationales that were advanced last week were not compelling.
Okay, that's your opinion. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
That's fine. Make a motion to adopt an ordinance 2016 dash twenty, amending Title II, Chapter I, Permanent Administrative Councils, Board, Commissions and Districts of the Pleasant Grove Municipal Code, removing the Strawberry Days Committee as one of the permanent committees and providing for effective date.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Eric and a second by Sid. By voice, Lynn?
Yes.
Ben?
No.
Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to one. And then, do we need further discussion on ordinance 2016 dash twenty-one? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we adopt ordinance 2016 dash twenty-one, repealing and rescinding ordinance 2013 dash thirty, Strawberry Days Committee and providing for an effective date.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Sid and a second by Diana. By voice, Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
No, not in the best interest of the citizens of Pleasant Grove.
Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to direct staff to continue to work with the Strawberry Days Association, Rodeo Committee and other private entities at further defining in a contractual way what our relationship is and our obligations for them.
Yeah, our plans to have a meeting with them when Jason gets back from hunting, so.
Okay.
Probably early October.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to review September twentieth council meeting agenda. We should have some board appointments at that time.
Thank you, Denny.
Thank you, Denny. Item nine A is a public hearing for a purpose to receive input from the public with respect to the issuance of bonds and any potential economic impact that the improvements, facilities or properties financed in whole or in part with the proceeds of the bonds may have on the private sector. Scott?
So this is our statutory public hearing that we're required to have, as it's stated here. Our intent is to keep the focus of the public hearing on that very issue. We know that the issue of location is still being discussed from our Public Safety Building Committee. They will, I think, have information back to the council somewhat soon.
Tomorrow night.
Yeah. And then our intent, I think, would be to have a separate public hearing, our first meeting in October, October fourth, for the public to come in and comment on location.
Right.
So we might still have people come next week that want to talk location, and we can just point them to our October fourth meeting. But that's, that's the timeline we're setting up and the input that we're looking for.
All right. Understanding that there will be those that want to come and talk about location.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be respectful, but we'll try to steer it back towards the bond.
Yeah.
Okay.
We are planning on having that meeting in this room. Whether, I, I mean, you might have better feel than I do as far as what we anticipate for attendance, but.
I just, just assume we plan for a larger group, and if it ends up being a small group, then it'll be a very unfilled room.
So when we did our road fee public hearing, we planned to hold it here. We had backup chairs and everything set up in the old rec. The old rec has a boutique, and so we will have a backup in the fire station. So we'll have chairs set up in the fire station if it gets too big. Now, once we move to the fire station, we lose our ability to do the live streaming. So we would like to be able to keep it in here, if possible, with the understanding that when we did the road one, we moved out a lot of the tables, and we, we were able to get quite a few people in here and, and be able to do it in, in that manner. So that's, that will be the intent of staff as we move forward.
All right. Any discussion on that? All right, the next item is nine B. It's a public hearing to consider for adoption, ordinance 2016 dash twenty-two, amending City Code ten fifteen twenty-three, residential facilities for people with a disability, adjusting the number of residents per facility and Section ten six two definitions to reflect the related Utah State Code updates applicable to the Pleasant Grove City Code.
Mayor, that one will be continued.
Continued?
Yes.
Okay.
It will be going to the Planning Commission on the twenty-second, and so will be moved to another night for the city council.
All right. Ten A, to consider for approval, a commercial subdivision called The Grove Plat A, located at approximately seven hundred south, thirteen fifty west, in the Grove Zone Interchange Subdistrict.
So both ten A and B are the same issue with ASEA who wants to do a development in our community. They are still working on a few items, and they will let us know whether they want to have us take action that evening, or they might want to continue it, so.
So we don't know tonight.
We don't.
Scott, you called, David.
Yeah, okay. They did want to continue?
They want to be on the, on the agenda.
Can you give a brief explanation as to what these items are then for the council?
Yeah, so there's currently the plot of the property.
You could have been saying stuff all night.
Wow.
Well, he was. He was muttering stuff.
So currently, the Central Bank location was one parcel. There was a plan at some point to develop the whole parcel. That's what this plat will do. It'll subdivide Central Bank into one lot. The future ASEA building, their main office phase one, will be the second lot, and this plat will subdivide it into three additional parcels. There is, just so you're aware, and you will be seeing very shortly, a following plat in their agreements to create four lots. So you got Central Bank, and there will be a parcel C created on the twentieth next week. They will take parcel C and create a three-lot plat essentially, and, and then they want to subdivide that further immediately as well. So due to being able to start on their site, getting everything approved, they're moving forward with their site plan approval next week and the plat with the two lots. You will shortly thereafter, maybe even as soon as the fourth of October, see them proceed forward with a, those additional three lots being created on that.
So that would be a change, and the change part of it would go to the Planning Commission before it came to the council?
So on the twenty-second, so next Thursday, they're planning to relook at that. So this is something that's developed. They moved forward initially and said, we want to just do two lots. In their agreements with the purchase of the property, they have to do a further subdivision of the property to meet with Dennis Baker and his requirements. And so they're going to move forward. It's still valid. Everything is still meeting all of our ordinance requirements. There's no concerns from staff with regards to proceeding this way. And then they want to subdivide further that plats, that parcel C that's created into three additional lots, and, and so that's how we're going to move forward on that.
Okay. Any questions? All right, item ten C is to consider for adoption a proclamation declaring September ninth through twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, as Constitution Week. I think we've done this in the past, and normally proclamations come before the council, before they're approved and, and read in. All right.
What does that entail?
We read it, we take action, and we proclaim that day or that week as.
Proclaim.
Yes. I'm pretty sure that's what it is, right? Proclamation.
Yeah, it's a proclamation, you're just proclaiming it. And just as a side note for your information, the Utah State Bar Association, in, in conjunction with Constitution Week, they ha, excuse me, they have attorneys come and do actual lessons on the constitution in the various elementary, junior high and high schools in the area. So there have been a lot of attorneys that sign up and volunteer to donate their time to go in and teach a class during that week.
Okay. Okay, neighborhood and staff business. I'm going to just start over here and go around. I'll catch you on the, in line. Anything from you? Daniel?
No, we'll use, I have a question, but I answer it.
Okay.
So, and don't worry, I'll present the next time, too.
Okay, thank you. Cherry?
Just want to thank the various city councils who were at Jubilee and all of the other volunteers for their help. Lisa Coombs has decided not to do it, I think you know that, next year. So we'll be finding another person to run it. But it was a beautiful day, and thank you for your assistance.
Thank you, Cherry.
Also, if anyone is, if you know anyone interested in our history, the Historical Commission is looking for members.
So we have one that.
We have one, but we need several.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Tina?
Nothing.
Scott?
Nothing.
Libby? Okay. Denise?
Cherry.
David?
Cherry.
Leo? Dave? Mike? Marty?
Um, sorry. That wasn't me. We do have, next weekend, it'll be on the agenda, to talk about the final pay request for the Locust Avenue project and Third South, and a change order with regards to the work completed on that project that needs to be worked out. So that will be on the agenda. We'll get that for Kathy. As far as project status, so that project is done, we're working on one box to finalize that up that was left a little low. So we should be completed there. The Garden Drive project is going well. They've installed all of the main line on that project. They are working on installing all of the service laterals now, or will be. I think they get their tests back tomorrow. So they'll start putting in all of the, I mean, all of the connection services to the culinary system starting this week. So the project's moving along great, and look forward to getting that one done. The four thousand north sewer project is starting. They're mobilizing right now this week. They should be on the ground Monday to start installing. They'll start at Ninth West and four thousand north, getting into the existing manhole that's there, and then start laying out of that intersection and up four thousand north. That street will be closed through traffic during the construction, just because it's so narrow. It's too hard to maintain through traffic on that road. But it will be open for local access only for the residents along that road during the construction period. And that's anticipated to be completed by the mid-part of October, no later than the end of October. So we got to get, we got to get paving back down, and that's, that's what their deadlines have been. So it'll be a fast project. So it'll be a fast project. They're going to have to clip right along to get that project done, so I think that's all that we have right now, so lots of stuff going on.
Thank you.
I purposely now drive along Locust just for fun.
Because you can go faster.
Kathy?
Officer.
Diana?
I had a wonderful time at the Heritage Jubilee, so I, I hope we can find someone to take that over.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Lynn?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, Sid? No? Eric?
I think Mud Hole won, right? I think Mud Hole won with Little Denmark right, right there.
Old Fort did not show up.
No. Last two years, Battle Creek won, I remember that. I think this year, we didn't do quite so well. I remember that I owe a staff member some money for some root beer floats, too.
Money?
Just occurred to me. Just remembered that when you started talking about this. So catch me after, I will, I have to run to an ATM. We, the Rotary Club of, of Utah County here in Pleasant Grove has their annual Tour de Donut, which is a major event. Anybody that likes bicycling, that likes competitive eating, we're doing a new route through American Fork this Saturday. It would be worth attending if you like, if you like donuts or biking at all. It's a great event, and has a huge attendance this Saturday. Give me a, give me a call if you have curiosity about that, I can get you details.